Welcome to Conversations Different, a podcast from the Santa Fe New Mexican about the interesting people and places of Northern New Mexico. I'm your host, Inez Russell Gomez, and today we are going to talk to a brand-new city councillor from the city of Espaniola, and not just about his election and what he hopes to do, but what got him into politics and the very interesting path he has led to this moment. Welcome, Sam. This is Samuel Ladue. He says, "No X, even though Ladue's, the village, has an X." The new city councillor, one of them, from Espaniola.
Hi. Nice to be with you, Inez.
Now, for conflict of interest purposes, I'd have to say I have known Sam since he was a high school student in Pawke and was a writer for The New Mexican as a Gen Next participant. And how did you get away from journalism after that great start?
Well, I really enjoyed journalism. I started to do some freelancing during high school and college for various online publications in the video game and tech sphere. But, as you may know, journalism is a very tough path to follow.
And it pays so well.
Yes, it pays so well. And getting work, especially at that time, I graduated during the recession.
Right.
So it was very, very difficult to find steady income. And I also kind of was blossoming in my own political mind as well, and I started to get involved in politics. And I had to choose which career path I wanted to go down, and I decided to go in the more political career path as a way to try to help my community.
I never can understand why anyone would choose politics over journalism, but you know, if you didn't, we wouldn't have anyone to write about. Now, going back to your career path, in New Mexico, of course, most of the North is Democratic, but there is a very strong Republican streak has been since before Franklin Roosevelt. A lot of people who switched to Democrat at that time, there's families that did not. So was your family one that stayed Republican, or did you find the Republican Party on your own as a young thinker?
I actually found the Republican Party, but my family has always been fairly moderate.
Right.
My grandfather was a Democrat who worked in the Johnson administration.
And that would be President Johnson?
Uh, no.
No. Oh, Gary Johnson.
Gary Johnson.
Duh. So here's a Republican administration.
Yes, and he was a Democrat in a Republican administration. He helped run the Education Insurance Authority. And we've always been fairly open-minded and moderate when it comes to political issues. So even though some of us maybe be part of different parties, we're all actually pretty aligned ideologically.
Right. So it's more about the issue than it is about partisanship. And, but you chose, you started out as a Republican. Was it because you were inspired by Susana Martinez, who was the first Latina Hispanic governor, or what was it that brought you that way?
Yes, I wanted to, I was kind of upset with the Richardson administration. And I felt that there was just a lot of corruption in the Democratic Party, and especially here in New Mexico. And I thought Governor Susana Martinez was a breath of fresh air. I was 18 at the time, and I decided, at that time, I still was trying to figure out which party I was gonna go to, but I registered Republican to vote for her in the primary because I felt like she was the strongest person to win, that could win the gubernatorialship here in New Mexico.
That is, that was, that was, I think, obvious when you talked to her. And definitely, you know, especially she was facing Diane Dennis, who was the lieutenant governor of Richardson's, and it put two women head-to-head, and one who had a different background because of her criminal prosecution. She was a DA for so long.
Yeah, and public safety has always been important to me, especially since, you know, the Espanola and Pawke Valley have struggled with public safety issues pretty much my entire life.
No, that's true. So you are 18. You were going to college at Northern New Mexico College, is that right?
That's correct. My mom actually signed me up behind my back. I wasn't exactly the best high school student. So she wanted me to go to college, and at that time, you know, I was just writing a couple of articles, making $50 here or there, so I needed something to do. So my mom helped me out and pushed me into college. And it was probably one of the best decisions that's ever happened to me.
That's right. One of the best decisions that was ever made for me.
Exactly.
I tell you, mothers have the power. So at the same time, I think, I think one of the things that, in your story, is so inspiring is your educational background, because you didn't stop there. You went on to Highlands, and what else have you done educationally?
I then went to George Washington University. When I finally decided, you know, I'm going to be more serious about politics, I was out working some campaigns, and I was doing fieldwork, and fieldwork is admirable, but it's not exactly the most livable situation, working 12 hours a day, knocking on doors and making phone calls. So I said, "I want to take this a step further." I decided to apply for graduate school, and I got to George Washington University, and I got in. I was actually surprised I got in. And it was very interesting, on the first day of orientation, I had to explain to everyone what New Mexico Highlands University was, and that there was a Las Vegas, New Mexico.
Yes. I had a similar experience, because I went to graduate school at American University, and both George Washington and American are in Washington DC. And I actually got everyone in my class convinced that jackalopes were real, because they didn't know about New Mexico. And at that time, Edwin Meacham was the governor of Arizona. He was corrupt, and they thought everyone, they kept telling me, "We're so sorry about your governor." And I had to say, "That's not my governor." You know, different state, one over. But the ignorance of the West from the people who are the elites is so huge.
Oh, yeah.
So I bet you got to educate people throughout your time.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, the amount of times people thought I was from Mexico was tremendous.
You speak English so well.
Yeah, exactly.
But why is your name French?
Yeah, so I finished my graduate degree there, and then I decided I wanted to give back. I was working at the time in Governor Larry Hogan's administration, and then I decided to move back closer to my family and finished out the term of Governor Ducey's administration in Arizona. And while there, I started becoming an adjunct professor at Grand Canyon.
Okay.
And I recently just became an adjunct professor at UNM La Salle.
All right, so you're kind of following in the tradition of your family, because your grandpa was in it, is that right?
Yes, my grandfather was an educator, both at the high school level, but also at the college level. My grandparents were, I mean, all my family, I come from a family of teachers.
Right.
And then my mother is a school nurse.
And that really kind of shows the importance of having normal schools, because both Northern was a normal school, Highlands was a normal school, and they were designed to train teachers and to get people out to all the rural areas of Northern New Mexico, Southern New Mexico, and get everybody learning.
Absolutely. My great-grandfather, he had his farm up in Dixon, and he spent years raising money both in Dixon and going to Sacramento to do farm work, so that his daughters could go to Highlands and get their education.
Oh, on that note, we will take a quick break and be back in a moment with Sam Ladue and Conversations Different.
Thanks, Inez. This is Patrick Dorsey, publisher of the Santa Fe New Mexican. We hope you're enjoying this episode of Conversations Different with Inez Russell Gomez. Great local content is only possible with a talented staff dedicated to bringing you the best local content possible. For that staff to do its work, we need your support by subscribing to the Santa Fe New Mexican. If you're already a subscriber, thank you, and if not, there's never been a better time to subscribe. In addition to our home-delivered newspaper that comes with full digital access, we also provide digital-only subscriptions for santafe new mexican dot com. We'll also be releasing more online-only audio and video programming moving forward. The Santa Fe New Mexican has been here for nearly 175 years, and we want to continue being your source for local news and information. Visit us at santa fe new mexican dot com slash subscribe, or call us at 505-986-3010. Thank you.
It's a new day in New Mexico, and the doors to boundless opportunity are open as tens of thousands of New Mexicans reach higher to pursue a dream, broaden their horizons, and retrain for a better job. With the New Mexico Lottery and Opportunity Scholarships, you could build yourself a better future anywhere in the state. You put in the hard work, we'll help with the costs. For eligibility details, visit reachhighernm.com.
Welcome back to Conversations Different. We are talking to Sam Ladue, who by the time this airs will be one of the new city councillors at the city of Espaniola. Now, you've been involved in a lot of campaigns, but you, this is the first time you ran for office.
That's correct.
And was it, was it worse or better than working for someone else?
It's incredibly different. You're used to meeting quotas, and when you're a staffer, and trying to knock as many doors as possible. And when you're a candidate, you could be at a door for an hour. So it's completely different in how you approach things, and people are a lot nicer to you when you're a candidate. That's awesome. And it was, you know, an interesting experience, because it was my hometown.
Right.
And I've actually knocked these doors before. In fact, one of the first doors I knocked on this campaign, a gentleman invited me into his house, and he's like, "I remember you. You've knocked on my door for Romney."
Oh, that's awesome.
And that was like 10 years ago. So like, the fact is, is that door knocking is important, because people remember. And this gentleman remembered that I knocked on his door for Romney.
And you already had a link when you were asking him for his vote.
Exactly. So he was very kind, and we talked about all the issues that we're facing in the city, particularly the crime issue, because he was actually in Santa Fe County. And one of the small parts, you know, a third of Espanola, about a third, is in Santa Fe County, and they're often the most ignored part of the city, and especially with county services.
And they're probably ignored by Santa Fe County as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we had a long conversation about that, because a very small part of my district is in Santa Fe County.
Okay. So one of the things that I think is worth people knowing about you is your relationship with Senator John McCain, and the work you did on his campaign, and the fact that you were privileged to attend his services.
Yes, Senator McCain, when I was, in 2016, I was looking for a campaign to work, and I just happened to cold-call Senator McCain's campaign and asked if I could work for him. And I said I would take Northern Arizona. Little did I know, at the time, a lot of Arizona politicos don't like working in Northern Arizona. So I was a godsend to them. But I won in Northern Arizona, because it felt most like home.
Yes.
And I got all, everything north of Phoenix, basically.
Oh, my gosh.
I was, I was based out of Prescott, and I had to do events and Flagstaff and Jerome and Kingman and Window Rock and all these places. In fact, one of my favorite stories is when Senator McCain called, you know, his folks called me, and were like, "We need you to go to Prescott Walmart and buy every piece of candy in Walmart, because you're gonna have to drive tonight, in the middle of the night, to the Navajo Nation, because we're going to be in the Navajo Fair, I mean, the Navajo Parade. And you're gonna be on the float with the Senator and the Navajo co-talkers."
Oh, my gosh. What an honor.
That was, that was one of the things that I had to figure out the logistics of in a hurry.
Yep.
But Senator McCain was a big inspiration to me. He actually changed my mind on a lot of things. I was a lot more of a firebrand hardcore conservative before I met him, and he opened my mind to a lot of how things worked. And I also saw, being in my first Republican primary, just how, you know, divisive some of the party tactics could be, and how we need to be more open-minded and stuff, and how that can dramatically affect policy.
Yeah.
So McCain was a big influence on me, especially from 2016 forward, which was really important, because the party probably fundamentally shifted at that point.
And now it has really shifted, because it is now the, instead of RNC, it's Trump MNC, because they fired everybody yesterday.
Yeah, that was, you know, I had some friends that were affected by that.
Yeah.
And, you know, to me, it's just crazy, because you're getting rid of all this amazing talent that has been there for years and years and years, in the name of loyalty. And what I've learned in politics is that the best way to keep people loyal is to help them in their career and help them stay there. And to me, you know, I don't think there's a more long-term thing that could hurt the Trump people than to get a bunch of young motivated staffers who have years of experience and basically pit them against you.
Yeah. One of the things that kind of, not cracks me up, because it's too depressing to be cracked up, but if there's anything about Donald Trump through his lifetime, is that he is only loyal to himself. So how people have thrown their lives down for him, their fortunes, their reputations, for someone who will jettison them as soon as it's convenient for him, I do not understand. And why they think they're gonna be different, I don't get.
Yeah, like, if you know my history, you know, I did cast the votes for him at the Republican National Convention.
The youngest delegate.
Yeah, and I then, I then unendorsed him after the Access Hollywood tape.
Yes.
And particularly because he refused to apologize and own up to what he did. And I think that that spoke a lot about his character and part of the reason why I haven't been able to really get behind his candidacy ever since.
Yeah.
And then after January, you know, January 6th, you just can't, I just can't ever see myself supporting him.
That makes it hard, because you're a moderate, you know, somewhat conservative, you know, probably fiscally conservative, strong defense, all of those things, and you have to see a party that was those things now, you know, cozy up with Putin, you know, use social issues to club people to death, to then give big tax cuts to wealthier people. And it's like you don't have a political home if you want to be part of a party.
Yeah, I've kind of felt politically homeless the last couple of years. But I do think that the conservative values that I hold dear are timeless, and that eventually, over time, the fever will break, and that the party will go back to the way that it was. I mean, and there's been other, you know, we saw this, if you go look through history, there's been similar outbreaks, you know, with the Buchanan situation, and Nixon, and stuff like that. I think that, over time, those core values do bring the party back, but there's been a lot of turbulence over the last couple of years, and I do think extremism and political polarization are some of the most concerning issues of our time.
Yeah. And one of the things I always was grateful for is my son was taking American History at the community college during COVID, and it was all virtual, so I could listen to his lectures, and they really got into the know-nothing party. And when you think of the roots of everything that's happening in the United States, that whole streak of, "We don't care, we just know what we think, and we like you, so that's it," it really, it's a huge part of our character. And you're right, we do swing back, and one hopes that that will happen again, and if not, there will be no more political discussions, because we will, you know, have an authoritarian government. And you don't have real elections then, you have fake elections. Anyway, on that pleasant note, we will take a quick break and be back for one more segment with Sam Ladue, a new city councillor from Espaniola.
My name is Maria Jose Rodriguez-Cadiz, and I am the executive director with Solace Sexual Assault Services. Our mission is to prevent sexual violence and empower survivors of sexual violence through restoring dignity, strength, and resiliency. For almost 51 years, Solace has reduced the impact of sexual violence. We do it by focusing on human rights, social justice, hope, and dignity. We believe survivors are experts in their own experiences, and acknowledge that empowering them is crucial to their healing. Our advocacy, forensic interviewing, and therapy services are centered to their needs. Our sexual violence prevention programs in schools and community is just as important. Please check our website at findsolace.org, and if in need, you can call our 24/7 hotline, which is 800-721-7273. Your support is crucial to the lives of survivors. Thank you. Gracias.
We are back with Conversations Different, talking to Sam Ladue, who is a new city councillor in Espaniola. He also has worked in Republican politics at many levels across the country, not just the state. And I want to talk about what he thinks young people who might want a career in politics should do, because really, you've set a kind of a high bar for other people to follow.
The number-one thing they can do is just to get involved and show up to meetings. That's my biggest advice, is that don't miss a political meeting that you think you might be interested in. And just showing up, people will get you involved. It's just like going to church for the first time. People will see you there, and they'll be like, "Hey, do you want to do this? Do you want to do that?" It's very similar in politics. If you go there, people love young people, they want to hear your ideas, they know that you're the future. And just to get involved and get active, you know, there's always your local campus party stuff, there's also nonpartisan stuff, like, and depending on where you're going, if you're a young conservative in law school, you can go to, you know, the Federalist Society. There's different workshops on the conservative side, there's the Leadership Institute on the Democratic side, there's the Wellstone Program. And if you just get involved in these activities, you will see that opportunities will present themselves. But my biggest advice is to hold true to your own values. It's very easy as a young person to get swept up in a movement that wants to just exploit your young labor and exploit your identity. And it's, be wary of that, keep strong to your own principles and your own ideas, and realize that you can carve your own path. I know it may be more difficult, and you won't get all the accolades and the pats on the back and stuff that you would if you just go with the flow, but if you carve your own path, you will respect yourself more in the long run, and you will be able to have a sense of freedom in your own ideology and your own ideas that you wouldn't get if you just, you know, attended every conference you were invited to.
I think it's really important for everyone to ponder what you just said, to be true to yourself, because we have a situation in politics today where people are abandoning their character and their principles for blind loyalty. In some instances, in other instances, they're so strident about, "This is the only way to do X," that they can't compromise. And politics is about compromise. You know, we don't have dictatorships, we have elected representative democracy run by laws in our constitutional republic, and people have to give a little. And we seem to have lost that.
I agree. And, you know, it's easy to get swept up in this stuff, especially if you're a young person. Like, you look at organizations like Turning Point USA, and it's a giant fun party, you know? They have money shooting out of cannons, they have girls in swimsuits, you know? You know, if you're a young man in politics and you get invited to one of these conferences, and you get all your red meat thrown at you, as well as, you know, all this exciting and fun spectacle, it can get, be really easy to get, you know, wrapped up in that stuff instead of focusing on the policy and the changes you actually want to see in your community.
And that's where we get back to the city council, because it's nonpartisan. You're a Republican, but they don't, you know, have you take a Republican oath when you get elected to the city council. So the issues that you're gonna be working on are going to be very practical, very close to the block level, basically. And does that appeal to you?
It really appealed to me, and that's part of the reason I chose to run for this office instead of a partisan one, because right now, I feel like, you know, it probably would be difficult for me to win a primary in the first place, and second off, our politics are so divided at a partisan level that nothing gets done, and I want to get stuff done.
Right.
And I feel like, unfortunately, with currently in partisan politics, the way it's set up, you are encouraged, it's to your benefit to not get things done. It's to your benefit to be just a loud, obnoxious voice, and we become a parliament of pundits, as opposed to someone who, I mean, to people who actually want to get things done.
I love that, "parliament of pundits." That is a great phrase.
And that's basically what it is. I mean, if you look at some figures like Matt Gaetz, or J.D. Vance, or, you know, Marjorie Taylor Greene, or AOC, you have all these folks who are more interested in getting on the camera than they're actually are in legislating. And, you know, I have a lot of, I really care deeply about Espanola, and I feel like its city council has been poorly servicing its community. And I said, you know, that's the old Ronald Reagan quote, right? "If not me, then who? If not now, then when?"
Right.
So I decided to step up. There was an open seat where I grew up, I grew up in Valley Estates. And I said, "You know what? I think it's time that I put my, you know, what Teddy Roosevelt said, 'Be the man in the arena.'"
That's right.
And that's what I did.
Which street did you live on in Valley Estates?
Valley Drive.
Oh, my gosh, so did I. That's so funny. When we first got married, David was working in Taos, and I was in Santa Fe, so 125 Valley Drive was my address.
And mine was 140.
Oh, that's funny.
But they changed all the numbers now.
Yes. Well, if you ever saw a strange lady jogging with a baby carriage, that was me, because I was home three months, and it was back before there was a Walmart, so there was nothing to go buy, you know, that you could get, so I would just run around, and then we'd go to town, you know, and the weekends or in the evenings.
Just the theater and Reds, right?
That's right. And Reds, that's right, Reds was still there. And of course, Saints and Sinners was still available, and Mr. Cook had his big warehouse, and, you know.
The iconic neon lights of Espanola, it's sad that only Saints and Sinners is left.
Yes.
But that's something that, if you look through history, there was so many amazing, cool neon stuff in Espanola going up.
Now, there were, and it was, what I always thought was so interesting about Espanola is the way it didn't grow around a plaza, but it had all of its little villages. And so later on, they decided to create a plaza.
Yeah.
And it's a very nice kind of center of town. I saw, you know, Obama speak there, Clinton speak there, I forget who else. I've been to rallies, you know, when I was covering things for the paper. And I know when Mayor Lucero was the mayor, he got more people from the Espanola Valley to go to Hands Across America, they got Moriarty, they were around there and stand together, and in the process, cleaned up the town. And it was just such a burst of civic pride. And I'm thinking that's probably something that you'd like to see again.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I remember growing up is that there was the massive gang violence issue in Espanola in the 90s, and the community really rallied around an urgency to fix that problem. And unfortunately, at current day, a lot of our leaders in Espanola have not had an urgency around some of the major crises that the city is facing. There's a major homelessness issue, there's a major drug epidemic issue, and the crime rate is out of control, and then you just haven't seen that sense of urgency. Like, I remember growing up, they had, you know, police officers come and speak to us every week at Espanola Elementary to try to tell us not to join gangs. We actually had Kiki Camarena's mother come to a school assembly and speak to us about the dangers of drugs, and there was just a constant urgency to try to get us to do better and to live up to a higher standard. And Hands Across Cultures was deeply embedded into the school. And you just don't see that same sense of urgency, even though the crises are arguably worse now than they were back then.
Well, as I always tell my friends from Espanola, at least your hometown was never the cover of Harper's Magazine entitled "Smack City, USA," as Las Vegas was, because in the 60s, we had our own heroin problem, and I'm sure still have issues. But it seems like in Espanola, the whole drug culture has just become another choice of life, and that's kind of a mindset that has to be broken.
Yeah, well, we may not have had the cover, but we were listed as the heroin capital of the United States by Forbes Magazine at one time. And, you know, the overdose rate is still the highest in the country.
Yeah.
You know, living in Maryland, and seeing in Baltimore, and learning about the heroin highway from Espanola to Baltimore, I learned a lot about how that, that system worked, and also reading the book Shiva and learning about that history. And then, you know, when I was in DC, it was during the revelations by Senator Portman about how fentanyl was being used through the post offices and dead drops in cities like Baltimore and Espanola, and through the mail system. And, you know, learning about all that, and how like, how much of an uphill battle it is, and how the lack of urgency is allowing this to thrive, that's what really disturbed me.
Well, it seems like as a councillor, one of the things you can do is advocate for rehab money, because you need law enforcement, but you also need a chance for people to get clean, to get off drugs, and then hopefully be productive citizens. And the one thing... and then hopefully be productive citizens. And the one thing we have right now in New Mexico is we have money.
Yeah.
So.
And you know, I've been, I actually toured a recovery facility at the old Eagle Village, which was the Travel Lodge Hotel.
Oh, nice.
There in Espanola. And I learned about how it's basically kind of like a graduate program for Darren's Place. Where they leave Darren's Place, they get clean and then they go there and they try to build those skills up, like the financial and, and other skills to get them back on track and try to get them back into society. And I learned about how there were a couple of folks there who just recently moved out and got houses in Valar. They and are actually working at the Big Five in Espanola and Walmart and stuff like that. And, you know, those were some, some good lessons to learn. I got to tour the facility and how they turned these hotel rooms into basically studio apartments for these folks.
I love that. Because we had an incident, I volunteer at the homeless shelter in town. And we had an incident where a young man had been cleaned for two weeks. And between a Saturday night and a Sunday night, he had gotten hooked up again with fentanyl and almost overdosed in our parking lot. And it was obvious that there wasn't enough support after he got out of rehab. So having a place where they can go and then a graduated step could make a huge, huge difference.
Yes. And I was very, you know, encouraged by some of that. I know that I'm also, tomorrow I'm going to be touring the Pathway Shelter as well as the, the new homeless encampment thereby under the bridge. Cause it's important that as city councillors actually see this issue for ourselves. There's been a large disconnect. Like I, I talked to the, I talked to the gentleman who runs the program there at the Eagle Village. And he told me that no one from the city has ever visited the facility. And that he got kind of disappointed that the mayor at one time said, we need some sort of recovery housing program in our town. And he's like, I've been here for three years and they didn't even know.
Wow. So one of the things I guess you've learned is to know what you're talking about when you speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and also, you know, be out there in, in the trenches and on the ground. Sometimes selected officials can get so caught up in our own lives and our own, you know, political bubbles that we don't see the, the wider range. I, I attended a 100% Rio Reba meeting last night and learned a lot about some of the services that are being helped, being used with the homeless folks. And just some of the plans. And the, one big problem is we don't have the demographics of these people. We don't know how old they are. We don't know how many there are. We don't know how, you know, where they came from. How can we help these people? And how can we address this issue if we don't even have the basic facts of this population?
No, that's huge. That's actually one of the things whenever we intake a new person, we get all of that information. Because it's an essential part of, of dealing with the problem and getting grants and, and just understanding, you know, is it a person who just got divorced and got kicked out of the house? Is it a long-term drug addict? Is it a long-term homeless person? You know, there's so many levels to the problem.
Well, you know, and then like I, I go to McDonald's and sometimes there's a vihito couple over there, you know, very older couple who, who sits out there and asks for money. And their, their services are going to be dramatically different than a lot of the young, you know, adult males. And then, you know, there was a tragic story on Christmas of a young pregnant woman that was sleeping in a tent outside Goodwill in Espanola. And the services she needs are dramatically different as well. And we just heard about, you know, a, a woman who died in her tent. So like this is a humanitarian crisis in Espanola. And it's something that's been ignored and kind of pushed around and not talked about a lot. So I hope I can really help with this issue because as the, as, you know, the months get warmer, there's going to be an increase in population and it doesn't seem like the city has any plan for that.
Right. And one of the, the best things you can do in government, this is my last tiny bit of advice to you, is don't be reactive, be proactive. And on that note, I want to thank Sam for spending so much time with us today. And we look forward to hearing all the good things that you're doing for your wonderful hometown.
Thank you, Inez. Have a great evening.